Um, next, um, item on the agenda, application, this is the Baymar manufactured home park. So, um, yeah, all right, who's uh, who's gonna speak on that one so I can see a hand or something?
Uh, well, it's not a public hearing, it's closed.
Yeah, I meant for the applicant, I'm trying to figure out who's gonna.
Either Ira or um, or Ken, I guess.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Emanuel.
Oh, there's Ira, all right, Ira.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the public hearing was closed at the last meeting, subject to uh, the acceptance of uh, limited written, written comments. And uh, we're here just uh, looking for your decision.
All right, and um, it ju- it just, if I can make one quick comment, uh, the public hearing, all of our public hearings are on site plan review. And I know mu- we've had this public hearing open since last June. And most of our comments were based on landlord app, the landlord and tenants. And that's uh, not within our purview, it's not a land use issue. Even though we let people talk and hear it, it's not something that this board um, can de- decide. We can't use it in our decision, we can't make comments about it, it's outside our purview. But we gave the residents enough time to address their concerns, so the applicants could, you know, address them and talk to them. But other than that, most of our public hearings on the site plan, so I just wanted to confirm that. All right, so we um, for Baymar, um, before we go through anything, John, any comments? Any updates you want for uh, on the Baymar?
No, we had a couple outstanding comments um, that they've addressed, um, so engineering wise, we have no additional comments.
All right, um. Wait a minute, Max, any uh, comments?
Um, my only remaining comment was again regarding the signage, I think we discussed it last, last meeting.
Correct.
Um, the applicant has proposed something, um, I'm not necessarily uh, happy with what they're proposing. Um, I uh, I did email them back regarding that, I don't, I don't know if they've changed that proposal. Uh, but, um, as I understand it, they are uh, proposing a sign well into the site. Um, stating that, uh, I think the words are, roads are covered with water during extreme storms. Um, which is a, a fairly generic, I think you could say that of any road. Now where it rains, they're covered with water, but uh, that's not really standard. Uh, so, uh, I was suggesting uh, something that serves the purpose I was looking for. Uh, which was essentially to um, express to the, the public that this is an area that um, in the hundred year storm, uh, parts of it will be underwater. Um, so, I had s- I had emailed actually a couple of items to um, Mr. Gennaro, um, I don't know if, if he feels any of them are sufficient for his client. Or if Ira uh, felt that way, uh, I'd be happy to share them with the board tonight, um. It's up to you, or if you feel like this issue is, is not relevant or not important, you know, I'd be happy to move on.
All right, um, Ira and Ken, you, did you look at Max's suggestions?
I did, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Ira Manuel. Uh, we did look at it, we discussed it internally, uh, we compared it against notes that we've taken, uh, then his previous discussions with respect to this, uh, and we believe that the signage that's been proposed on the plans is sufficient. Let's understand that this is, these are private roads, and there's one segment uh, where we, we have a uh, possibility of flooding based upon the revised base flood elevations and based upon the elevation of the roadway system that we are proposing.
All right, I, I disagree with that, Mr. Manuel.
You disagree with that, Max?
No, I said factually, the idea that there's one segment that floods. This road during the hundred year storm, by your own measurements, will flood to a depth of a foot. Which will allow for emergency vehicles to get through, except for the area around um, the, the boat launch and around, uh, I believe it's unit fifty-nine, where it will flood a little bit more. Uh, up to four feet at the fif- unit fifty-nine and up to six feet at the boat's boat launch. Um, it, but the entirety of Baymar Drive, uh, will be underwater during the hundred year storm by your own mapping.
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Ken on that one, uh, but in any event, uh, the signage we think is sufficient. Uh, we're talking about a situation where it would have, would occur with respect to the hundred year flood, if at all. Um, and, and Ken, if you wouldn't wanna jump in, please?
With respect to unit fifty-nine, we um, did elevate the road additionally in our last submission. So, that is, you know, at a foot or less of flooding compared to the hundred year flood event. And we should also note that the hundred year flood event that was adopted by the town of Stony Point for this site, it's actually higher in elevation than the observed flooding from Hurricane Sandy. So, if you compare it to Hurricane Sandy, the road is pretty much gonna be at or above the known high watermarks. With the one exception of Baymar Drive at the intersection with the boat.
All right. All right, uh, any comments from the board, I mean, Ken and Ira, just let me take the, if, say in the future if we needed to change the signs, there wouldn't be a problem, would it? If you had to change one of the.
If it became apparent that we needed to prove, provide additional safety measures, we, I'm sure that the applicant would, would cooperate, just as.
Okay.
Operate the entire way through.
All right, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure, all right, does any of the boards have any o- uh, any other questions?
Um, Tom, Tom, I have a question. If we're filling in this land, this, this, this parcel of property to meet the hundred year flood level, why are we gonna be below it? As just proposed, I thought, I thought the uh, the applicant was supposed to meet the hundred year flood plan.
We meet that requirement with respect to setting the building height elevations, all the bu- new buildings are two feet above the hundred year flood. The codes don't necessarily discuss how to elevate your roads. Um, it's not required to have all the roads be outside of the hundred year flood plane. So that's something we discussed at the beginning of the job, before it came to the planning board with John and Tom. Um, to see what criteria they needed, especially Tom, with respect to providing the emergency access for the, for the emergency access vehicles.
All right, I understand what you're saying, uh, so let me ask you, Bill and John, are you satisfied that uh, God forbid, there's such a storm of that magnitude? That uh, less than twelve inches of water would be acceptable for the uh, applica- for the residents to exit their property?
Well, yes, both of us, so neither one of us answered. Yeah, we have, we have no issue, I reviewed this again over the last year again with, with Tommy. Um, with the, with the elevated elevation that the town adopted. Um, there's just a hair under one foot and a portion of the road is discussed, vehicles can get through that, so we have no objection. And again, there's nothing specifically in the code, as, as Ken referenced concerning roads, um, so, we're satisfied.
Okay, uh, just a safety concern on my part, that's all.
Oh, most, most of that, that's why we've been looking at this for the last, you know, several months.
Yeah, if, if you remember from the beginning, you know, I, basically, most of the roads are, except by the uh, boat launches at elevation nine. Um, the FEMA elevation, the base flood elevation is seven, so the roads are two feet above the FEMA's base elevation, they're one foot below the town's advi- or the town's adopted elevation of ten. So, knowing that they were gonna be one foot below the uh, town's um, local law. Um, John and Tommy, from the beginning, they actually measured every, every emergency vehicle, what uh, draw they needed, their exhaust pipes and everything to that uh, um, and then also um, basing their um, engineering on future trucks and so forth. They were very well satisfied that if it ever did flood to elevation ten, that the emergency, emergency vehicles would have no uh, issue uh, maneuvering the property. That's one of the reasons why that back road, that loop road was obviously put in for a couple reasons, one for units, but also where the emergency vehicles, if they had to, can go to that back road and be uh, they wouldn't have to deal with the boat launcher area, so um.
Action.
You know, we did as best as we could with what we were working for, don't forget, we are working with an existing mobile home park. You know, in a perfect world, if it was a brand new uh, um, application, you know, obviously be somewhat different. Okay, I just wanted, I, I thank you for explaining that to me and the rest of the board, uh, and that was my concerns. And uh, you're right, this is not a new application, this is a, uh, to me, a reconfiguration and improvement of an existing or previously existing uh, development.
Right.
Yes, you know, so I understand, thank you. A lot of the stuff I say personally is just put on the, is, is made comments to put on the record. Compared to what we do at TAC meetings, I.
Yes.
Cover them, I like to cover the board and prepare us, thank you.
Thank you, Gene, um, Ira, just, just to update everyone, what did we go from, how many units to what we're currently? I know that we, we dec- we decreased, right?
Oh, we decreased significantly, uh, there were, we leave a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and fifty-two units in the old Bu- Bu- Baymar. And we are down to either one thirty-seven or one thirty-eight uh, units now.
I believe it was one fifty-one down to one thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight, yeah, I figured it was down, okay, good, and the one, the one big improvement I see is um, the road design, the way it flows. Compared to what it used to be.
Oh, absolutely, that was, uh, as, as we've said before the board many times, the, the first thing we did before we even made an application was to sit down with Bill and Tommy, uh, to say, how, how do we make this thing safer? How do we make it so that if there is a flood, uh, we can get people in and out? Uh, and that is how this road network uh, developed, uh, we got rid of what was effectively a hub and spoke and replaced it with a series of loops, uh, all of the roadways, uh, as you've said just before, are elevated. Uh, uh, to uh, uh, make sure that we can accommodate the emergency vehicles. Uh, you heard Bill talk about how we went s- uh, we went so far as had the uh, the emergency vehicles measured to make sure that we had sufficient clearance, so the, that's, that's one set of major improvements. The other set of major improvements is that we got everything out of the wetlands. We had, it's that we're right on top of the wetlands, uh, and we've moved everything much, much further away from the wetlands. There's nothing uh, adjacent to the wetlands anymore, um, there are a few units that, you know, stick a little bit into the hundred foot adjacent area. Uh, we were able to satisfy DDC with respect to that, they're issuing a permit. Uh, so that's the other major improvement uh, to the site.
All right, good, good, I would thank you, and I know, um, um, tonight, we're, we're looking for like the, the site plan approval. And like you said, that's what we've been looking at, is the site plan, and I did see O and R, um, they're ready to I guess they have, they're okay with everything, but because of the COVID, they can't get anyone in the office or they can't get anyone over to see and do different things. But they have, I saw the, the emails that every, that as soon as things are backed up, they'll sign off.
That's cu- uh, that's correct, and uh, in addition, uh, we agreed to put a note on the plan uh, that there will be no placement of homes within the O and R easement until such time as they give us a express written approval.
All right, all right, good, Bill, you're okay with that, right?
Yeah, as you remember, as I was just pointing out, last week or at TAC meeting, we came up with that.
Yeah.
Uh, language to make sure that no building permits will be issued for any of those units until uh, a written uh, easement agreement, uh, a written agreement, um, is approved by uh, O and R.
All right, good, all right, um, does the board have any other comments? All right, um, if not, I think Steve, uh, what do, uh, what will, we'll do, um, a resolution for site plan approval?
Okay, um, I, I did prepare a um, a final site plan approval, um, for the board's consideration, which has been circulated.
Right.
To um, to all members of the board, and um, what I'd like to do is have, uh, uh, I think also a, a copy was given to Jennifer Johnson, our stenographer. And uh, what I'd like to do is have that um, resolution just marked as an exhibit, uh, as part of the record. And rather than read all seventeen pages of it right now, um, I'd like to summarize it essentially. Just to give the introduction, uh, identify the documents and things that the board considered uh, without reading the contents of them, and then skip down into the um, uh, the final portion of the resolution uh, which I will read, and um.
Mr. Honan?
Yes.
This is Alex Borstein.
Wait, hold on.
I'm sorry, Alex, uh, please root yourself.
It's not a public hearing.
But there are procedural issues I would like to address.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing, there's no procedural errors, we had the public hearings open since June. Everything's, we, we checked with our attorney, so, you know, if you could please put yourself on mute, it's, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, a- a- and as I was saying, um, wh- what I'll do is I will, I will read that and um, and then, uh, since you have the board members can read along with me, uh, as I'm doing it. Um, at the end, um, I will then read the, the, the final portion, as well as the conditions. Um, I, and I just uh, note that, uh, the board also will be asked to override um, item number nineteen from the Rockland County Planning Department letter. And uh, so that I, I will read that portion of the, of the letter, and also um, Mr. Emanuel's response to that particular comment by the uh, planning department. All right, a- and then after that, um, then you, you can vote on that. Um, there's also a second resolution, uh, with respect to this application. And that's uh, what we get with, with respect to a determination of consistency of the proposed action, that's this uh, uh, redevelopment. Oh, uh, consistency with the local waterfront revitalization program, the LWRP that we've heard about. So that's a very short one, I'm just gonna read that one, it's maybe two pages tops.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject for a second?
Sure, Bill.
I think the uh, consistency should be uh, adopted prior to reading the resolution.
That's fine, too.
Did, you know, we don't wanna, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I understand, you wanna do that one first and then take, uh, based upon that consistency, um, adopt the site plan.
Correct.
That's uh, that's logical, and I can do it that way also.
All right, thank you.
So, um, uh, I'll read then the, the um, the resolution for the W, uh, I said the LWRP. Uh, that relatively quick, and then we'll um, take the vote from the board, and then we'll move on to the site plan. Acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is, thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, this uh, this is a resolution of uh, determination of consistency of proposed action with the local waterfront revitalization program, also known as the LWRP of the town of Stony Point for the project Baymar Manufactured Home Park, by application of RHP Properties Inc. of thirty-one two hundred Northwestern Highway. Farmingham, uh, Farmington Hills, Michigan, four eight three three four, by its authorized agent, Mr. Joel Brown. Whereas the applicant has requested a determination by the town's waterfront advisory committee that the proposed action is consistent with the town's local waterfront revitalization program, the LWRP. Policy standards and conditions as set forth in Town Code, section two oh nine dash five, subparagraph G. Herein after the subject application. And whereas, uh, simultaneous with the application for determination, uh, this board has been reviewing a site plan application for this site. And the specifics of the proposed action is more fully set forth in said application dated December twenty-one, twenty eighteen. Uh, with narrative summary dated December eighteen, twenty eighteen, having previously been submitted to the planning board of the town of Stony Point for final site plan approval to reconstruct and redevelop an existing one hundred and fifty-two dwelling manufactured home park with a new one hundred and thirty-eight dwelling, uh, more or less, uh, manufactured home park and for various site improvements. And upon a submitted site plan for the project entitled Baymar, consisting of thirty-four sheets prepared by Booker Engineering P L L C dated December twenty-one, twenty eighteen, and last revised on July ten, twenty twenty. And concerning premises designated as section twenty point oh two, block eleven, lot seven, seven point one uh, on the tax maca- tax map of the town of Stony Point, county of Rockland. Consisting of approximately twenty-two point eight acres, located in an MHC zoning district with an address of four hundred Baymar Drive and located on the south side of Grassie Point Road, eight hundred feet east of Nelly Drive, Stony Point, New York. One oh nine eight oh, herein after the subject premises. And whereas pursuant to the New York State Department of State Coastal Management Program, a coastal assessment form, CAF dated February thirteen, twenty twenty, has been submitted by the applicant's project engineer, Kenneth DeGennaro, P E. And whereas the subject application and CAF describes the proposed action to take place upon the subject premises and is sufficient to permit review of an application for action, consistent with the provisions, policy and purpose of chapter two oh nine of the Town Code, known as the Town of Stony Point Waterfront Consistency Law. And whereas upon this board's consideration of this matter, it is noted that the town's LWRP does not make specific recommendations with regard to the project site. But the LWRP does suggest that existing mobile home parks could be appropriate to coastal lands provided they are not located in an area of high velocity water or storm wave wash. And it is noted that this project is for the redevelopment of an existing mobile home park, which was decimated by the effects of Superstorm Sandy some years ago, and that the present application seeks the redevelopment of the park at a less intensive and more resilient fashion. Which is generally consistent with the state's coastal zone policies and the policies of the LWRP. And whereas the project engineer submitted a revised base flood elevation, set forth on flood hazard maps dated March twenty-seven, twenty eighteen, which were reviewed and verified by the town engineer and adopted by the ta- uh, Stony Point Town Board on August fourteen, twenty eighteen. And based on these maps, no mobile homes are proposed in areas of high velocity waters or storm wave wash. And whereas the planning board acting in its capacity as the town's waterfront advisory committee has determined that the proposed action is located in the town's coastal area and further that the proposed action is consistent with the town's local waterfront revitalization program, policy standards and conditions as set forth in Town Code, section two oh nine dash five G. And whereas this matter was an agenda item before this board on July twenty-three, twenty twenty at seven P M. And all submissions relative heretofore are duly considered by the planning board. Now therefore be it um, resolved that the application for a determination that the proposed action relative to the subject premises is consistent with the town's local waterfront revitalization program policy standards and conditions, be and hereby is approved, and the chairman is hereby authorized to sign same and to permit same to be filed in the office of the town clerk, upon payment of any and all outstanding fees to the town, subject and conditioned upon the following, um, one, all of the whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference. And uh, the question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote this evening. Uh, uh, now, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, you can uh, uh, make a uh, a motion. Second and, and move forward.
I was on mute, sorry.
Tom, can I ask you a question first?
Yeah.
On the beginning of there, the redevelopment of existing one fifty-two dwelling manufactured home parks with a new one thirty-eight dwelling, plus or minus, what, what does that plus or minus mean? Where are we at with this?
I believe at the time it was drafted, it was unclear whether it was going to be one thirty-eight or one thirty-seven. So rather than redraft it, I believe tonight it was one thirty-eight.
Okay, I just was, just, just curious, that didn't go up to like one fifty-two yet?
No, I think he's right, one thirty-eight.
Uh, actually, with, with respect to the next uh, resolution that's coming for the site plan approval, it's one thirty-eight, solid.
Okay.
That's the one that's important.
All right, thanks.
Everything's important.
Well, yes, but it's, for, with respect to the actual units that can go on, it's, um, the site plan is, is the more important one.
Okay.
This is more a consistency that it's, that's consistent with the law.
All right, thanks, thanks, Bill, uh, Gene, um, all right, I have a, a resolution, I need a motion, I need a motion to uh, accept the res- adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion, Tom.
Who was that, that was?
Eric.
Eric, yeah, I have a motion, I need a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Uh, Jerry seconded, I got a motion and a second, um, any, we'll, we'll vote on the, on this resolution. This is for the determination of consistency, um, we'll go down the line, Jerry?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Myself, yes, all right, we have that one, now you have the next one you're gonna read, right?
Uh, yes, um, this is the one, uh, as I explained, is gonna be a condensed reading, because it is seventeen uh, pages. Um, and I'll begin with the uh, the beginning and then I'll skip around, and I'll try to keep, uh, if you're following along, I'll try to indicate what, what pages I'm skipping to. Um, resolution of final site plan approval for the project Baymar Manufactured Home Park by application of RHP Properties Inc. of thirty-one two hundred Northwestern Highway. Farmington Hills, Michigan, four eight three three four, by its authorized agent, Mr. Joel Brown. Whereas, uh, an application dated December twenty-one, twenty eighteen, with a narrative summary dated December eighteen, twenty eighteen has been submitted to the planning board of the town of Stony Point for final site plan approval to reconstruct an existing one hundred fifty-two dwelling manufactured home park with a new one hundred and thirty-eight dwelling manufactured home park and for various site upgrades and improvements, and upon a submitted site plan for the project uh, Baymar, consisting of thirty-four sheets prepared by Booker Engineering P L L C dated December twenty-one, twenty eighteen, and last revised on July ten, twenty twenty, herein after the subject application. And concerning premises designated on section uh, twenty point zero two, block eleven, lot seven point one on the tax map of the town of Stony Point, county of Rockland, consisting of approximately twenty-two point eight acres located in an MHC zoning district with an address of four hundred Baymar Drive, Stony Point, New York, one oh nine eight oh. And located on the south side of Grassie Point Road, eight hundred feet east of Nelly Drive, Stony Point, New York, herein after the subject premises. Whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the planning board determined this to be a type one action. And after circulation of a notice of intent, uh, assumed lead agency status on or about March twenty-eight, twenty nineteen and adopted a part two E A F and identified areas of potential environmental impact. And upon this board's review of an amended E A F part three, issued a negative declaration of environmental significance on September twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. And whereas this board considered a letter dated February twenty-four, uh, twenty nineteen from the uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And uh, uh, whereas this board, uh, uh, received and considered a letter dated March eleven, twenty nineteen from the Rockland County Center for Environmental Health. Um, and whereas this board cons- uh, received and considered a letter dated March four, twenty nineteen from the Rockland County Division of Environmental Resources. And uh, whereas this board, uh, received and considered a letter dated October twenty-four, twenty nineteen uh, from the Rockland County Center for Environmental Health. Um, skipping to page three, uh, whereas by letter, uh, whereas the planning board considered a letter dated October twenty-one, twenty nineteen, from the Rockland County Department of Planning. Um, uh, which consisted of uh, twenty-four distinct items. Uh, number nineteen being, uh, there, uh, being a comment which read as follows, number nineteen. There must be no units or disturbances within the New York State D E C wetlands or the one hundred foot adjacent area. Uh, whereas, uh, this board considered a letter dated March six, uh, twenty twenty, from the attorney for the applicant, um, addressed to the planning board, uh, wherein, um, uh, the attorney addressed each and every uh, item uh, in the uh, Rockland County Department of Planning letter, uh, including uh, paragraph nineteen. And the attorney addressed it as follows, nineteen, the New York State D E C regulations do not prohibit units or disturbances within the one hundred foot adjacent area, and in fact, they specifically permit disturbances under appropriate circumstances. And the applicant has worked with the uh, uh, New York State D E C to achieve an uh, appropriate treatment of the area, given the nature of the improvements, and the, the New York State D E C's concerns. And to the extent that the uh, New York State D E C has endorsed, uh, the dis- uh, the disturbances and units within the one hundred foot adjacent area, uh, the Rockland County Department of Planning has no right to object. And a similar demand was made to the. And a similar demand was made to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that board overrode this requirement for the reasons uh stated i- in that decision. Um uh this board uh also considered a uh memorandum that was uh dated uh September thirteen, twenty nineteen. Uh entitled Project Review Sheet by uh John O'Rourke, uh P E, the town of Stony Point's engineer. And um also uh this board uh received and considered a letter dated September sixteen, twenty nineteen. Uh from the applicant's engineer, Kenneth uh DeGenero, uh P E of Booker Engineering P L L C. Uh responding to all of the comments of uh the town engineer, uh John O'Rourke. Uh skipping now to page nine. Um uh whereas the the planning board um received and considered. A uh prior memorandum dated uh February two, twenty nineteen, and May nine, twenty nineteen. Um and also a uh a a subsequent four-page memorandum uh to the planning board. Dated April eight, twenty twenty, from uh Max Stosh of A I C P of Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC. And um uh with respect to that comment letter, this board also received and considered. A uh a a letter from the applicant's attorney um dated May four, twenty twenty. Uh wherein uh he made a responses to each and every uh one of the comments of uh Mister Stosh in his letter. Uh skipping now to page fourteen. Uh whereas uh this board referred the applicant to the Architectural Review Board, the A R B of the town of Stony Point. For review of the unit's design considerations, the lighting and landscape features. And improvements upon submission and plans prepared by Daniel Sherman, Landscape Architect. And the and the A R B by a decision dated November twenty, twenty nineteen, issued an approval of the application. And whereas this board referred the applicant to the Zoning Board of Appeals of the town of Stony Point for a number of area variances. And by a decision dated January two, twenty twenty, the Z B A issued a conditional approval of the application. And whereas the applicant is seeking permission to conduct regulated activities in the freshwater wetland conservation buffer. Which is that area one hundred feet from the freshwater wetland uh indicated on the maps. Uh uh on the plans in the southern portion of the site. And said buffer area is designated in Town Code Section twenty-one fifteen dash seventy-two, B subparagraph one. Which provision is also known as the freshwater wetlands protection and buffer requirements. And in accordance with section uh two fifteen dash seventy-two C. Disturbance to the wetland conservation buffer shall require approval by resolution of the planning board. And uh whereas uh the applicant has submitted to the board a letter dated February twenty-four, twenty twenty, prepared by its attorney and project engineer. Setting forth and explaining its uh proposed development and disturbance in the regulated areas and uh regulated adjacent areas. And that uh the disturbances proposed are minimal. That in the course of reconstructing the site, many structures and intrusions into the regulated areas were removed. Or partially abated, uh that the proposed intrusion into the regulated areas are the minimum necessary to. Improve the configuration and safety of the site for flood resiliency, site circulation. And improved emergency access. And whereas this board in reviewing this application, considered reasonable alternative locations for the proposed structures to be placed other than in the buffer. And the necess- and the necessity of any disturbance activities. And it is noted that presently there are numerous structures, roadways and entire homes situated in the buffer. And that the present proposal will substantially reduce nearly all of these encroachments. With the except, with the exception of only a few structures. And that, and and that for the structures proposed to be placed in the buffer, this board is satisfied and reasonable. Is is satisfied that reasonable alternative locations for the proposed structures do not exist on the site or simply unworkable. And that disturbance activities will be minimal and due to uh restrictions inherent to the site. This board is satisfied with the feasibility of the plan as proposed. And whereas this board has considered the proposed activities of the applicant relative to the buffer. In compliance with the standards for making determinations of this nature as set forth in the fresh freshwater wetlands protection and buffer requirements. Of Town Code Section two fifteen dash seventy-two. It is, it hereby approves the disturbance of the wetland conservation buffer as part of the site plan application approval. And whereas uh this board has been advised that the applicant has made an application for a floodplain development permit. Pursuant to cap- Town Code Section one twelve dash twelve. For the purpose of conducting the work anticipated by this application. And pursuant to section one twelve dash eleven, the building inspector is designated the local administrator to administer and implement. Chapter one twelve flood damage prevention provisions by granting or denying floodplain development permits. In accordance with its provisions. And whereas this board has been advised that the applicant has consulted with Orange and Rockland Utilities Inc. And this board has received copies of emails and correspondence with O and R. Uh to determine that, determine whether the work anticipated by this application would re- unreasonably interfere with O and R's utility easements. Upon the property. And O and R has indicated that the applicant has addressed most of its concerned. Uh concerns and it anticipates that O and R will issue a consent letter in the near future. And whereas this board has received and considered the correspondence, letters and email messages from the citizens in the surrounding community. Uh identifying areas of concern to them regarding this proposed application. Members of the public appeared at the public hearings, provided testimony in various topics as well as. Uh interposing uh certain objections to the proposed site development plan. And voiced objections concerning accommodation and or relocation of the remaining park residents. Uh Mister Kevin P Mar, P E, as a member of the public noted his concerns generally with the project and specifically regarding the use of fill on the site. Among those testifying uh were Mister Martinez, uh uh Taran Dow. Uh Miss Gizzy and Marissa Guler, all residents of the park. And George Petanovic and Susan Phil- Philguerras of Space. And J- uh Jackie Drescher of Valley Cottage, New York, all of whom generally gave testimony supporting the remaining residents. And they were critical of the applicant's efforts to relocate or um accommodate the remaining residents. And they were critical of the insufficient financial offers proffered uh by the applicant. Additional comments were received concerning the the density of the proposed park plan. And and that units were too close together and they were critical that the uh health and safety of the residents were not adequately uh considered. And addressed under the plan. Alexander Burstein Esquire, representing tenants uh Miss Gizzy, Miss Graham and Miss Bunye. Made a written submission on July two, twenty twenty, outlining the economic hardships facing his clients. And urged disapproval of the application. Susan Philguerras of Space made a written submission on July one, twenty twenty, complaining about insufficient notice. Of the previous meeting of the planning board and that her foil requests were not being complied with in a timely fashion. And that she needed additional documentation. The board also heard from the president of the applicant, Mister Joel Brown, who over the course of the review process. Advised the board of the progress and status of the negotiations with the remaining park residents. And his efforts to reach amicable settlements with the residents. This board noted uh that the financial arrangements among the tenants and the applicant were not necessarily planning matters. Within the purview of this board. However, the board encouraged the applicant to directly, promptly and openly address these matters with the current residents. And also encouraged all reasonable efforts to be made to reach an amicable accommodation and resolution of outstanding issues with existing residents. Uh whereas uh this application was the subject of a public hearing before this board on July twenty-five, twenty nineteen. And kept open and continued to subsequent meetings and hearings and has uh and was then continued to June twenty-five, twenty twenty at seven P M. Which meeting was conducted remotely by an electronic interactive format. At which time the public hearing was closed, but left open for receipt of written submissions to July two, twenty twenty. And all submissions relative thereto were duly considered by the planning board. Whereas this matter was an agenda item before this board on July twenty-three, twenty twenty at seven P M. And all submissions relative uh heretofu were duly considered by the planning board. Now therefore be it resolved that the subject application for the site plan approval relative to the subject premises. Is approved and the chairman is hereby authorized to sign same and to commit same to be filed in the office of the town clerk. Upon payment of any and all outstanding fees to the town, subject and conditioned upon the following. One, all of the whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference. Two, item number nineteen of the Rockland County Department of Planning Letter dated October twenty-one, twenty nineteen stating. There must be no units or disturbances within the New York State D E C wetlands or the one hundred-foot adjacent area. Is hereby overridden, uh because the uh New York State D E C regulations do not prohibit units or disturbances. Uh within the one hundred-foot adjacent area, and in fact, they specifically permit disturbances under appropriate circumstances. Here, the applicant has worked within New York State D E C to achieve an appropriate treatment of the area, given the nature of the improvements. And the New York State D E C concerns and to the extent that the New York State D E C has now endorsed the disturbance and units within the one hundred-foot adjacent area. The office of the Rockland County Department of Planning respectfully no longer has a legitimate basis to object. Uh uh comment number three, the applicant will accept and comply with the clearance assessment. And other requirements to be imposed by Orange and Rockland Utilities. After O and R performs its clearance assessment with respect to the utility easements over and upon the subject premises. And number four, this resolution shall constitute and operate as the planning board's approval of disturbance to the freshwater wetland conservation buffer. Consistent with the uh, consistent with approval of the site plan and in accordance with the provision of Town Code Section two fifteen dash seventy-two. And that that concludes the reading of the uh proposed resolution, Mister Chairman. In an abbreviated format. You have to unmute yourself, Tom.
Sorry, I have a um resolution for a final se- site plan approval. Um any comments before I ask for a a motion to accept? I I need a motion to uh accept the resolution of the final site plan? Who who needs, who wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mister Chairman.
Jerry made the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Carrie second, um any discussion? Alright, I have a motion and second to uh accept the resolution of fi- final site plan, I'll poll the board, Jerry?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I think, and myself, Carrie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so uh. We'll pass the resolution for the final site plan approval.
Chairman, thank you, members of the board, thank you very, very much, it's been a long road.
Thank you.
We appreciate your efforts and we look forward uh to being able to provide a hundred and thirty-eight units of affordable housing for the town of Stony Point.
Thank you, Mister Emanuel, thank you, Mister Genero.